I would like to welcome everybody this evening to our redevelopment agency meeting and city council. So I'll call to order the redevelopment agency meeting. And the first item is an item of business to approve at the minutes of July 17, 2019, as have been presented.
Some left?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So I'm seeing none opposed. Item 2A, discussion of possible action regarding resolution number 218, authorizing the chair to execute a participation agreement for the Pioneer Technology District, EDA number five, Denise Stick.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, although you're bored tonight right now. This resolution will authorize the agency to pay approximately $1,575,000 to the developer of a project in the Pioneer Technology District, which is EDA number five. The city has yet to trigger the tax increment in this area, so this project will benefit all of the taxing entities at its full value once built. We will be working on triggering that taxing, tax increment revenue within the next year at the latest, because we know that this development agreement will definitely spur economic growth as this development goes in. Just a little background on this, if you don't mind. The city's been negotiating, as you're all aware, with this developer on this project for quite some time. It's called Project Lone Star. It's a distribution and warehouse facility located in the northeast corner of the intersection of Old Bingham Highway and Bacchus. The facility will be approximately 1.3 million square feet of interior space and is expected to have an assessed value of approximately $109 million. This project, like we said, is an EDA number five, and it was created, this project area was created in 2016. The developer, in exchange for this participation agreement, will be constructing infrastructure at a cost of greater than the agreement's value. The infrastructure will include roads, traffic signals, water, wastewater, and storm drain lines, and the developers agreed to construct additional system improvements, so above and beyond what's required for only their development with this agreement, to incentivize future growth in the area. Estimated cost of all the system improvements is $3.6 million. We have double-checked those figures with our engineers, and they were appropriate with the engineer's estimates. The infrastructure construction will be covered in a separate development agreement later this evening. Many development projects within the city have what we call a pioneering agreement, which means that any infrastructure cost in excess of what the developer was required to do for their project are eligible for reimbursement within five years after the project's completion date. That's a typical pioneering agreement. However, this developer is not requesting a pioneering development agreement, is only requesting a participation agreement, so this would be our only economic incentive to them for anything that they are putting into that area. Project Lone Star will be the first major project in this area and is expected to spur additional development. It's adjacent to this, what the city's working on to designate as a megasite, and the agency anticipates the construction of Project Lone Star and associated infrastructure improvements will encourage this development very quickly. In my experience, this is a very reasonable participation agreement, and it's also very short-term. It's a one-time agreement, and that's it. In addition, the RDA's cash flow has been tested, and it can manage this participation agreement and will be reimbursed through tax increment at a later time. So I am available if you have any questions about this agreement.
Any questions? Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor.
Board Member McConaughey.
Thank you, Chair. I was hoping somebody else could go first, because I don't quite have this pulled together. But I just want to double-check the dollar impact to the city. So $109 million property tax value would be taxed at, I know there's a few different rates, I believe it's about 1.22%, of which the city would retain about 15% of that 1.22. Is that right?
Yeah, that's about right.
Okay. So the impact is calculated off that, works out to be 199,470, so roughly, I mean, we're...
About $200,000 a year in property tax revenue, correct?
That would be coming in, so we're only, and we're looking 1.5 million?
In exchange for the infrastructure that will be put?
So we're looking at about seven and a half-year payback on that.
Very good.
And it's just a one-time. Is my math right?
It is.
Awesome.
Good job.
Councilmember Anderson, or, excuse me, Board Member Anderson.
Thank you, Chair. So in the water, water infrastructure, does that include water tanks? We had just, our last meeting, talk about some deficiencies in water tanks, so is it including a water tank to kind of service that area?
It does not, it does include a water impact fee, which, in this development agreement, they have asked that the city exchange for the payment, so it will include some money to go towards reserves or storage tanks. However, the infrastructure that they will be putting in has to do with lines and meters and those kinds of things that will service the facility. This facility has not been determined to be a large water user at all.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have, Chair.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone like to make a motion on this, then? Councilmember, or, Board Member McConaughey.
Move to approve resolution 218.
Board Member Anderson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote on this motion.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Chair writing?
Yes.
Board Member Lamb?
Yes.
Board Member Burton?
Aye.
Board Member Whitlock?
Yes.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Do we have a motion to adjourn the redevelopment agency meeting and come to the city council meeting?
Some left?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We will call to order the city council meeting, August 14. We recognize that Councilmember Zach Jacob is not here with us, everyone else is, and Councilmember Jacob has said that he would be a little late today. He had a family activity going on. With that, we'll start with a pledge of allegiance from Paul Coats.
Will the audience please rise? And join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The audience may be seated.
We'll move to citizen comments, and a reminder to everyone that you'll have three minutes to address city council on any issue you wish to tonight, either that's what's on the agenda or not. We'll start with those that have signed up, and one has been noted to speak with item 5C. So there are three items that will be open to public hearing tonight, and that's one of them, and you're welcome to speak now, or you can hold off until it's the public hearing time. So Sally, is it, okay, you're up.
I want to say thank you to all the people who listened to me last month on this very issue, and voting in my favor at this point. The property in question is literally in my backyard that we're referring to here, turning a public area into heavy commercial. Without taking a voice vote or a hand vote, my guess, my educated guess, is that the number of people here who have heavy commercial in their backyard is zero. And what I'm asking for here is to have the same consideration for the house that we bought last year in West Jordan, to have what you probably have as neighbors, and I wrote down on my request, that I want neighbors with approximately, give or take, three kids and a dog that throws up on the carpet, which shouldn't be that big of a request in a family-oriented town like West Jordan, Utah. What I'm not looking forward to is obviously having more big companies, or even small companies, move in. So I'm here with answers, with suggestions, with solutions. You know, I'm asking that maybe it be zoned residential instead. That would grant me, like I say, what most of you have for neighbors, families. Or, as another alternative, leave it as public use. The park is, gets used every single day, and maybe make the water retention basin into a skate park, and move the swing set up to this one area that is adjacent to the five houses in question that really don't want to have heavy commercial in their backyard either. That is the nature of what I'm here for. So I'm asking for you to give me what you all have yourself, or to keep what you all have yourself, which is a reasonably quiet, quiet neighborhood and family-oriented neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kaye Johnson?
I think that there's going to be a rezoning as part of this meeting on the property down near, or across the street from Dunford Bakeries, down zoning from RR1 down to something else. Now, I've been a resident for a long time, and we've seen a lot of growth in this area in the last few years, including out west where those high, big buildings were built recently, and more to come. So that makes it more important than ever for us to maintain this RR1 zoning that has worked so well for us for the past 50 years plus. I don't deny that the proposal is not a big deal, but in a way, it is a big deal, because there are many properties in our area about the approximate size of this one, and if you pass a down zoning on this one, what are you going to tell the rest of the people that have that type of property that want to come in and rezone down the road? It creates a big problem for us, because we have one of the open neighborhoods and love it, and we sure like to maintain it. I don't like to see erosion of the neighborhood just for the sake of profit. I would think that the property owner could build three houses there under the current zoning, but he wants four. So I'm hopeful that the city council will see the wisdom of maintaining a zoning in our area, because we have a 50-year success record. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address city council this evening? Please come forward.
My name's Alter Kaminski. I'm a resident of West Jordan. I have been for 16 years. I'm incredibly concerned with the cavalier attitude the city of West Jordan appears to take toward the safety of its citizens. After several communications with city personnel in trying to resolve an issue with garbage can placed in front of a fire hydrant every week, we've been informed that there is no concern with people obstructing a fire hydrant with anything other than a vehicle. In the workplace, OSHA dictates that nothing can obstruct a fire extinguisher, not even an empty waste basket, because seconds count when it comes to fighting a fire. Why, when I'm a private citizen at home, do those very same life-saving seconds not appear to hold the same level of importance to the city? Allowing anyone to obstruct a fire hydrant puts my family and my community at an elevated risk that is completely preventable. By permitting this kind of activity to continue, the city is condoning it, and by ignoring it, they are breeding complacency. The lack of laws surrounding this topic appear to be at the heart of the issue, but that doesn't seem like a good excuse for failing to address the problem. Even the garbage truck driver recognizes there is an obvious problem with obstructing a fire hydrant and often moves the can down the street after dumping it. Further evidence for us that the city is complacent about fire safety is that there is a fire hydrant that has been missing since it was hit by a car last spring. The city has still not replaced the fire hydrant. How is it acceptable for the city to leave its tax-paying citizens without the safety facilities that we expect to be both available and fully functional? While paid for by the taxes, the city owns the fire hydrants, the road in front of the fire hydrants, and even to extent, the garbage cans themselves. This places the onus on the city to manage these assets, and any failure to do so could be considered negligence. As such, private citizens are left at the mercy of the city and given no options to try and remedy these safety issues, and as a result, now feel frustrated, disillusioned, and unprotected. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would wish to speak to city council this evening? Seeing none, I will close the public comments, the citizen comments, and move to city manager's staff reports and updates. City manager, Ricky.
(inaudible) the mic's not working. Can you hear me if I yell louder? I'll let you know if the council director at this point has anything to add. Advise the community...
Thank you. Advise the community that Dave Naylor's mom would be just unhappy as all get out if I didn't remind everyone the Gardner Heritage Farm Open House is tomorrow night, August 15, 6:00 PM. And as she warned you, don't wear shoes that you don't want to get muddy. And secondly, I wanted to give you an update about the playground. It's coming out of the ground, you can see it, it's getting slides, it's getting roofs. We have planning yet to put in the porn play, the playground benches, and more fencing. So realistically, it's probably going to be October. People see that coming out of the ground and assume it's going to happen really soon, but there's still a lot of work that we have to get done, and it's going along very well. You can see that it's got quite the view. Additionally, I'm going to ask Mr. Lee to update you on the progress of selecting a entity to design the new arts facility.
Councilmembers, I just want to share with you publicly and get it on the record where we stand on the Community Arts Center. As you know, the council approved the staff to move forward with acquiring an architecture firm to complete the design for the Community Arts Center. We put out an RFP, we received seven bids from different architectural firms. They were very good bids. We narrowed that down to three finalists. Last week, we had a panelist of staff, including architecture, design, land use, civil engineering, public works, procurement, finance, and administration interview and review the top three finalists. We have unanimously selected one firm to be the winning firm. Right now, we are still doing some background checks. Assuming those come back fine, we anticipate bringing to you in September, a contract to move forward with the architecture firm, starting on the design.
Anyone else from staff want to talk this evening?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to council members, start with Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I'm trying, oh, it's actually not on, on that, it's more of a comment. I guess there's nothing visual that we could, I mean, not like a plan or anything, but maybe a timeline or for the, for this ours discussion?
So, time, we don't have anything visual in terms of plans. Each of the architecture firms that did interview, that were finalists, did come with some proposed rough ideas, however, they haven't done any programming yet to finalize those plans. In terms of timeline, we're hoping to get them under contract in September, so we can use this fall and winter to complete the design, put a design out to bid in winter, very, very early spring, so we can start construction next spring, summer, and catch it when the bidding season is good for the construction firms.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Can we do a comment?
Yeah, it's this communications part right here.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to thank everyone that chose to run for office, and I want to commend those that ran clean campaigns, and I want to express how important that is for the future of our city. I know that I'm an elected official, but just like many of you sitting out there and at home, I don't necessarily like politics. And when I feel that politics has become not honest and jaded, it upsets me greatly. It hurts people, but more importantly, it hurts our city, and it matters to our city. Our city's image matters. It matters if we want to have all of those places that we all say we want to come here. If we want a Trader Joe's, if we want a Harman's, if we want all of these things, we have to be a good city, and we can't have dirty politics and be considered a good city by the greater community. And it matters, folks, it matters. So I hope that for the general election, that each of the candidates shows us what they plan to do, how they plan to do it, and give us examples. If they think that there is money in our budget to do things, I hope that they show that to us, because I would like to know that for my vote, and I'm sure that everyone else would too. So I just encourage us to think of not just ourself when we're doing this, but the greater good of our community. And I'd appreciate it, just because it affects my home and my property value. Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb?
Nothing tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Burton?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Nothing tonight, thank you, Mayor.
And I want to do a ditto on what our city manager said. Betty Naylor called me tonight, too, to remind me to remind everyone of the Gardner Heritage Farm Open House, 1113 West, 8450 South in West Jordan, from 6:00 PM tomorrow. So encourage everybody that can to go to that. So with that, we'll move to public hearings. Number 5A, receive public input and consider for adoption, ordinance 19-24, rezoning 3.69 acres from RR-1D, rural residential one-acre lots zone, to RR-20D, rural residential 20,000 square foot minimum lots zone. Brooks Properties, Kurt Brooks, applicant, Lisa Elgin.
Good evening, council members. The Eagles Nest Rezone is a request to rezone these... I think I turned it off. To rezone the 3.69 acres that are highlighted there, right across from Dunford Bakeries on Han Drive. Currently, they are zoned RR1D, and the applicant is proposing that they be rezoned to RR20D, taking them from one-acre lots to basically half-acre lots. It is currently located in a general plan designation, a very low-density residential, which allows for both of those zone districts. And you can see the majority of the area is in that, that general plan zone designation. The applicant has provided us a conceptual plat map, what he'd like to do with the, with the land if you approve his request. And his request, and actually, his conceptual plan here, is all allowed by the municipal code. It meets all of our requirements, so staff recommends approval of the project.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Whitlock?
My question is, can you go back a slide, so I don't have this writing here? So when I, when I look...
This one?
When I look this way, this one, would be great. When I look towards, let me get my bearings there, there's Dunford, okay. When I look towards the east, I see a home and then a, then like a long skinny, is that one lot right there? So just east of this parcel, is the white thing another lot?
Yes.
So I understand that this family would like to keep their, like, have their own little compound. So in my mind, they could, they could legally, in what it's on now, build four homes on their current property, correct?
Yes.
And then they could buy land from the neighbor for number five if they wanted. That would be another alternative to keep their family together, correct? And that would all work in our current zoning? They could do that, right? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lamb?
So just to confirm, right now, is there only one home on these four lots?
There are two homes on the four lots.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no more questions from staff, our four staff, I will open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on this issue, please come to the microphone. And remember that you have three minutes.
Right. Kurt Brooks, son of the developer on the project, couple of problems. The one you just addressed is if you notice down on the bottom, there's a future road going through there, which you already own. And the only way to do that would be put that road, we're currently going to put in to make it match up. Once we do that, there's not room for four houses on there, that one acre lot's not even close. And we're dividing that road at our cost at this point in time. The lots are 600 feet deep, the person that you spoke earlier lives on, to the south of that, which is where the future road is, those lots are approximately 200 feet deep. So it's a completely different issue, and we're not trying to change the zoning on the other side of the canal, which I think there's a misconception that we are. And so that's, the only ones we've had spoke, you know, speak against it was those on 8750. But we're not trying to rezone those lots on the south side of the canal. So I think there's a misconception of what we're trying to do. We currently have four parcels there, one of them is landlocked, so it can't even be sold off as an individual. So the only way we can really do it is put them all together and divide it and come off that road that you're going to require at some point anyway, because you have access to it there.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address city council on this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and come back to city council for further discussion and/or motion. Councilmember Whitlock?
I have another question for staff. What is, what is the purpose of that future road? Why is it needed?
To make a connection to 8750 South.
But we don't have the connection now, and I seem to be able to get through just fine, and...
We don't have the connection, because only part of the land is dedicated with this...
Right, but, but some places, we really need roads. In my mind, not sure why we need the road here, so I'm asking, why do we need the road here? Someone at some time thought it'd be a great idea, but why? And we don't know? Scott knows, maybe?
This has been in this configuration for decades. This is not, not something that, this is one of the older subdivisions that we have in the city, and you're right, back many, many years ago, our transportation master plan had this, and if you look further to the north, you'll see other future planned roads. I'm not going to speak for, for Public Works, but from a pure planning perspective, it does not seem to make sense, the demand doesn't need it at this point. Further to the south, you see 8750. This would make more sense to, to complete the grid, which they, the concept that you've seen, that the applicant's proposing, would help make that connection more feasible in the future for greater neighborhood connectivity. But Councilmember Whitlock, you're right, if you're, if you're talking about this road, this alignment right here, I really don't see a significant need for that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, and he mentioned the landlock, so if I look at the southeast corner lot, is there no access to get to that lot, the way it is now? So if you put a house in there, there would be no way to get to it?
Because the applicant owns all four of them, he could widen the, the pole of that flag lot and put, put a house back there.
Okay. Since he owns all four, he could do that if he altered the other lots. Is that what you're saying?
Could you repeat that?
Because he owns all four, he could get access to that lot by altering one of the other lots.
Possibly.
But does he have access to that lot from the future road, is that...
He'd have to create a zone.
Right. He'd have to create a zone, but could he use the future road to get to it?
The one that's proposed?
Yes.
He's got it in there. He'd have access when they reconfigure all the lots, but...
Right. But if we didn't reconfigure it, could he technically sell that one lot and... and maybe could access it from the other, from the south end?
He couldn't do this, he couldn't just put in the road and create lots in that configuration. So that, that one lot just wouldn't be there?
Let me re-ask the question. If he sold just that one lot by itself, and somebody bought it and built a house on there, because it's all approved for that, how could they get the house? Could they use that future road that was marked in the other map to access that lot?
You mean coming up north from the land that's already been dedicated from 8750?
No, coming from the south, yeah, going north from 8750 on that future road.
If that road ever gets built, there's a canal to cross there also.
Oh, that's right, there's a canal there, okay.
That's the clarification. I, I misspoke before. This is not a future road alignment. This is the alignment of Bingham Creek. And that's, that's why we have some city ownership along, along the creek.
Okay. But that future road, does that city own that as well? Is that properly owned by the city?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb?
All right, so I'm not a developer, but I play one on SimCity. So looking at this, my first thought is, the person that is doing this application, now the road, the road itself that they're creating is their road, correct? That's not a city road?
That will be publicly dedicated.
It will be publicly dedicated? Okay. So if, in my mind, if I'm buying a lot on this, I would never want that road to go through because it'd be a private lane. That's not me, though, I'm not going to buy one of these lots. It's not that, it's applicant's decision to make. However, right now, there is no plan to put that future road in. So it seems like the biggest concern is the people on 8750 are concerned about that road going straight through. We're not deciding that here tonight. What we're deciding tonight is whether or not to put in five homes compared to four lots. And if those people want to live on that lane, knowing that, you know, there's a chance it could be future road that goes through, that's their decision because they're the ones buying the house, not me, not this council. But it is their land, and they have the decision to make of whether or not they want to turn their land into what they're proposing right now. So just, just a few thoughts as I'm looking at the plan of this. This is not my home, I will not be living here. But the decision we make tonight will rezone to allow them either four or five, so. Thanks.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you go back to the map that shows the zoning? Oh, it doesn't really, yeah. So RR1D is what's here right now?
Yes.
What are the surrounding properties? Are they all the same?
Everything in that very low-density residential is RR1D.
The conflict, the, the biggest conflict I'm fighting in my mind is how this would not be considered spot zoning that we, we've stated elsewhere in our, our master plan that we want to avoid. I'd be open to any thoughts or comments, but really, right now, that's the big hangup. If we do something on this particular parcel, how is that not taken away from the rest of the, the integrity of the existing neighborhood? That's, that's my concern, so I'd love to hear your thoughts.
Councilmember Anderson?
Oh, I was, councilmember McConaughey can have his answers to his thoughts or the thoughts that he's asking for before I speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The general plan allows for both, both zone districts within that designation. So it, it isn't without, outside of the realm of the general plan.
I see your perspect, your perspective, councilman McConaughey. This, this would inject a, a smaller lot size within the, the greater neighborhood. But when we look at items such as spot zoning, we reflect back to the general plan. What is the, the general feel and direction that the council's indicated? And as Lisa indicated, both zones fit within that designation. They both therefore are compatible. When we look at spot zoning, we, we look at mainly the, the jarring transition between, well, we'll have an example a little bit later on in the agenda, industrial versus residential, for example. That, that's a harder sell. When the general plan supports both zoning districts, generally, the planning profession looks at it as a compatible use.
I just, I just want to echo what councilmember McConaughey said. If we can go to the one with the lots, but before we do, if, if you'll notice, all these lots are large and deep, and then we're creating, and I, and I get that they're the same, that both designations fit in the ma, within the master plan. But we have long lots, large lots, and we've got this little three-acre spot in this neighborhood that has four significantly smaller lots, in my view. And I, and while it may fit in the zone, I still, I still question that it's not spot zoning. Is that a fair assessment? I mean, granted, both fit in the zone, but now we've got three acres that are, in my mind, significantly different than the surrounding community. So, thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Councilmember Whitelock?
And here's my concern. Not too long after I joined this council, I believe it was out on 5600 West, there, there was a rezone done from very low density. And, and it was right in the middle, and yes, you know, we're going to go to this and... But the problem was, then another one came and they wanted to do it. So I think it's a legitimate concern of the, of the neighborhood is that once you've done it on one, then it's gonna, it's going, it, it will snowball. And pretty soon, in West Jordan, we won't have very low-density residential rural areas any longer. And I think that's part of what makes West Jordan, West Jordan, is that we have, we have these pockets that, that people can enjoy a large area of land, and I like that. And I don't see a need for that road. So I struggle to see why we would want to do this in this area.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Similar question on, this time about that road. If there were another property owner that were, say, two parcels, two or three parcels to the east of the proposed property, and they want to do something similar, combine two of the longer parcels and, and do that, would we allow for a stub road for, for that development as well?
As the concept plan shows, the parcel to the east of it, it isn't narrow, or it's too narrow at this point to just divide and do their own thing. But the way he's putting this road in here would make development to the east possible.
Can, can you go back a couple, a couple of slides? So from here, you've got the, the two parcels that are together that are highlighted in yellow. As you're moving to the right, imagine that one is a buffer, so I'll call that one number one, the one adjacent. And then you've got number two and number three. If number two and number three wanted to join and then add a street so they could do a similar type of development, would that be something that staff would consider? The same as we're considering for this, the, the property outlined in yellow? I, I guess my question is if this whole section, if, if the property owners all were to say, you know, I want to do the same thing, could we conceivably have four or five little stub streets down there? I mean, to be consistent in allowing, to be consistent in applications, I, I guess my question is, would others be allowed the same thing? And if we were to do that throughout this whole section, what would, what cause would that have? And then the other thought to echo councilmember Whitelock, I'm not sure that I'd be interested with the city adopting another dead-end stub street that may or may not ever be finished. I realize, in my mind, I think that might be a separate issue from the rezone request, but I would prefer that it be built to public road standards but remain private. I don't want to see us using, I, I don't see a, a reason that we would use taxpayer money to take care of essentially this, this little small street that really doesn't benefit the public at large. So those, those are the, the other two things that I'm thinking on top of the, the desire to avoid spot zoning. And I realize it can be done. I, I like to try to avoid it. And then the, the street, and if we were to treat everybody the same way, if other property owners got together and tried to do the same thing, would the city still be supportive of that? That's, that's where my mind's at right now, so. I guess no questions, but sharing thoughts. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Burton?
So I have a question for Scott, if I may. So we're talking about spot zoning, or at least has been brought up. How is that different than infill?
Technically, spot zoning, it, it varies community to community by definition. There's no state definition that I'm aware of or limitation on doing that. A zoning or land use issue is, is completely at the council's discretion. It's a legislative act. Infill, from some perspectives, could be considered spot zoning. Spot zoning is sort of an antiquated term that, that we don't really use a whole lot anymore. But again, we look at context with, with zoning. And spot zoning naturally has a negative connotation. And if you're doing infill development, usually you, you focus on, on the positive interaction between existing and proposed use. Could you call this infill development? Absolutely. Could you call it spot zoning? Absolutely. It, it's just a matter of how you define it. Land, it, it's a finite resource. We have a, you know, it's, it's a precious resource for West Jordan residents and, and the city. And we need to look at highest and best use. For some, if you were to look at this, this neighborhood, they may say, well, it's not achieving its highest and best use. There's a lot of unused or, or undervalued property. For some, this could be the fantastic variety that makes West Jordan, West Jordan. So it's all perspective and, and it's very subjective. And that's why there's not a, a really, in my opinion, a right or wrong decision that the council needs to make tonight. It's all about what you feel is best for this neighborhood, and that's what makes it a legislative act.
Seeing no further discussion, someone like to make a motion then? Councilmember Burton?
I'll move to approve ordinance 19-24.
I'll second that motion. So we have a motion by councilmember Burton, a second by Mayor Riding. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitelock?
No.
Mayor Riding?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
No.
Councilmember Lamb? Vote fails two to four.
Public hearing item 5B, receive public input and consider for adoption ordinance 19-25, rezoning 22.81 acres from PC Planned Community Zone to SC3 Regional Shopping Center Zone for West Jordan Marketplace Commercial located at 9204 South, 5600 West. City of West Jordan applicant Ray McCandless.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Just move this. Just to orient you with the site, this is located on the south side of 90th South, between the Mountain View Corridor and 5600 West, which is here on the east side of the site. The sun, the applicant, the prop, let's see, the property is, again, about 22.81 acres in size. It's, it's vacant, and it is currently zoned PC or Planned Community. The Economic Development Department has indicated that there's been, since the Mountain View Corridor has come into play, that there's been some interest on the property to develop it and is looking for the, the best use and one that fits, or the best use of the property and the one that fits into the, the area. And has requested that the property be rezoned to an SC3 district. This is a, just a, an overhead showing the current zoning on the property. Again, this is 5600 West. To the east, the property is zoned PC, it's in the Planned Community Zone. The Sunset Ridge Apartments are here. And then there's a vacant piece of property on the southeast corner of 90th South and 5600 West, which is slated for future commercial. On the north side, there's also a single-family residential subdivision. There's, again, another piece of property that's vacant and is also slated for a commercial in the, in the future. To the south, there's an M1 district, it's part of the 21st Century Industrial Park. There are some existing light industrial uses, the south side of the site. What, generally, the PC or Planned Community zoning district is, it's kind of a mixed-use zone, but it, it caters more to residential kinds of uses. When you look at this property, you can see that 5600 West is a major arterial street. 90th South, another major arterial street, and then you've got a freeway that runs on the west side. And so the, the question is, is whether or not really the PC zoning district is appropriate for that, that side or not, or if it's, would be better serviced by rezoning it to a regional shopping center. To the, to the north, as I mentioned, the property is on SC3. It's, it's a, this piece of property is kind of hemmed in, if you will, by those arterial streets. We think that it, it really relates better with the, the property to the north, which will ultimately develop as a, a regional shopping center. Our recommendation, we think that it would be a good fit, just given that it is bordered by the arterial streets and industrial uses and industrial zoning to the south. We feel like that the, that SC3 designation on that property makes sense in this particular location. I think that the PC zoning came into play, the property was zoned PC as has been for, for years, before the Mountain View Corridor came, came into play. And so we just think that it's a, just given those changes that have happened over recent years, we really think that that SC3 zoning is, is the appropriate zone for that property. This did go to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission did agree with, with that zone change. Let me, the other thing is that the, the, what future land use map shows us areas regional shopping as well, so it's consistent with that, would not need a, a land use map amendment for this rezone. So that SC3 zoning is also consistent with the future land use map. So with that, we'd recommend approval.
Questions from council to staff? Start with councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. What would the impact of the rezone be on that community commercial on the east side of 5600 West?
It's, it's kind of a different kind of commercial. I mean, with this, it's either, this will, this is anticipated to be more along the lines of the neighborhood kind of commercial. That's what you typically see in your Planned Community Zones. For example, in, in Stone Creek or in the Highlands, you'd be seeing something that's a little less intensive, something that caters more towards the, the residential uses that are kind of in the median area. The regional shopping center caters to a larger area, larger variety of, of stores typically.
Thank you, and it does...
I think they're kind of separate, I think they're kind of different.
Okay. Thank you, and it does kind of buffer the residential further east between this site and the, the very high density.
It does.
So there's, that's good. All right, thank you, that's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there an applicant looking to use this land right now, or are we just rezoning?
We're just at, at rezoning right now. I think there, there is some interest, and I don't know if Paul here, Paul Coats, and he's been kind of tied in with that.
Because I know, and Paul can attest this, I understand that's the land that we had thought about for auto.
That's correct.
So do we have anybody yet?
We haven't given up on that idea.
Okay. So, so right now, we don't have any people that are looking to build commercial on that lawn at, at this moment?
Not at this point. We do know that on the, the hard corner that we don't own, Maverick is looking to go onto that site.
That one right there?
That's it.
Okay. I just want to make sure there's no more storage units in that section.
I appreciate that. And then, councilmember Anderson, the, the two lots that you referred to, we know that one is owned by America First Credit Union, the other is by Mountain America Credit Union. And they have, as...
And they have, as far as I know, they still have plans to construct there. It's just when this area starts to develop is probably when they'll pull the trigger on that.
Seeing no more questions for staff, I will open up the public hearing on this issue. Anyone wishing to address City Council regarding this item, please come to the microphone. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and come back to council for further discussion and/or motion. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm not as on the fence about this one. I think this is a better approach than the PC zone. That said, given the current economy, I'm really nervous about SC, but I still think that's better than PC. So, at this point, I think I would be in favor, but I would be, I'm still open to ideas and thoughts and suggestions, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Whitlock? Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. My question for seconds, what is spurring this to happen now? Why, why now?
We're just trying to be proactive. As we've looked at potential uses, like an auto dealership, that's not allowed in a PC zone. It is allowed in a SC3 zone. So, we're just, SC3, if you look at the use table associated with that zoning district, it just, it's the most flexible, it gives us the most options, and so even though we may not have a specific user in mind, it just, it just gives us more options, and we're just being proactive.
Councilmember Whitlock?
So, I like the idea because I strongly feel that along freeways, it should be commercial development, not residential development. As someone that now lives by a freeway, it's not stellar. So, I will be in favor of this.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, does the zoning need to change for Maverick to build there?
No, you can build a C store in a PC zone, so it really doesn't affect what they're trying to do on their property.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I see number nine in there, I think I see one here. I move to adopt ordinance 19-25.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Second.
A motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Councilmember Whitlock. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Mayor Riding?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Public hearing, item 5C, receive public input and consider for adoption ordinance 19-26, amending the general plan land use map for 12.084 acres from public facilities to community commercial and rezone for PF Public Facilities Zone to CM Heavy Commercial Zone. West Ridge Academy, John Schulten, applicant, Ray McCandless.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant's requesting to rezone two pieces of property that are currently part of the West Ridge Academy, from, as Mayor mentioned, from a PF zone or Public Facilities Zone to Heavy Commercial Zone. The property's located just on the north side of the Bagley Park Road, which is here. This is Holly Park Road, which is an extension of 5600 West. 90th South is here to the north. The Site 1 is roughly five acres in size, and Site 2, which is over here on the south side of the academy, is approximately seven acres inside, in size. It's 12 acres total. Stay here. To the, just in terms of adjoining uses, the area that's here, south of the Bagley Park Road, is all industrial. That industrial line goes up to here and includes this property off to the east side of Site Number 2. As you'll recall, I think last year, the City Council rezoned this property to an R18 zoning district. We now have a preliminary, a plat that's been submitted and approved for, for this property, and those are all single-family dwellings. The property to the west, there's apartments here, and then there is the, some additional light industrial off to the west side of the property. To give you an idea of what the current future land use map looks like, this area is, the property itself is, and the West Ridge Academy is all part of the Public Facilities Zone. I mean, it's this, part of the Public Facilities land use designation. To the north and east, it's medium-density residential, and then there's also some medium-density residential here. On this piece of property, the future land use map designates it as parks and open land. I think there was some discussion about five lots in which, or would be affected as part of this subdivision, and those lots would be located here. So these, again, these are the properties that we are looking at. In terms of the existing zoning, the site itself, again, is on public facilities. These are, these lots that are to the east are part of the R110 zoning district. M1 is to the south. The applicant had originally come in with a request to zone the property to an M1 District. We thought that was a little intensive, just given its proximity to those residential uses, and so they came back in with a request to zone it to that CM District. This right here is just a concept drawing of what the property, or how it might develop sometime in the future. There's a large single user here, and then this would be subdivided at some point in the future. One of the things that I need to mention along with this is that there is a rather wide, I think it's about 119, 120-foot public utility easement that's here along this eastern side of this piece of property. So that means that no buildings could be constructed in that utility easement, so there is quite a bit of separation between the backs of those homes and any future buildings that could be put on the property. When you look at the CM zoning district, and we're looking at the different types of zones that could be compatible in this area, one of the reasons that we kind of landed on that CM zoning district is because by definition, the CM zoning district is seen as a transitional zone between industrial areas and residential areas. It can be used as that. The uses that are allowed on the land use table in the CM District just aren't as intensive as those that are in the light manufacturing. In this area, we also looked at the commercial zones. We really don't think the commercial zoning district would make sense at this location because it's kind of buried. It's not by any arterial streets, there's not really any visibility from those arterial streets. The other thing is, is that, and we also looked at business offices, and for the same reason, we really don't think that any of those zoning districts apply. So we thought that the CM District might be the best solution at this, this particular The, I mean, given that, that CM zoning district is a transitional zone, is considered a transitional zone, the staff had recommended approval of the rezoning request and the future land use map amendment. There was some discussion, and we did take this to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission heard from the public and heard the concerns. There's a couple of things that come into play on this property. There is a grade separate, or difference in grade from roughly this cul-de-sac to this area here of about 10 feet. So it's up quite a bit higher than those homes are. The Planning Commission felt that, and this public utility easement was discussed, but it still means that those buildings would be up quite a bit higher than, than those. I think the maximum building height in that district is 35 feet, but given that there is a 120-foot utility easement there, we felt that that would still give enough distance to mitigate some of those height concerns. The other issues that the Planning Commission were concerned about included, of course, noise when you get light industrial use, and there sometimes those will generate noise. And, and orders, there's truck, truck traffic as well. And the Planning Commission didn't go along with staff in this case. They felt that, that rezoning, and they focused primarily on this, what we call Phase or Part 2 site, but they focused on that one, and their biggest concern was that, they just didn't think that it was compatible with those neighboring uses to, neighboring residential uses. So there is a difference here, and again, this is just legislative decision. And so you'll just need to determine tonight whether or not, you know, to keep the zoning as it is, or to change that to the requested CM use, or if you can think of another zone that would be a good fit there, that would be another option that you could look at. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Whitlock.
So, so it was brought up by the resident. How about we do housing in that area? But you, at least I certainly wouldn't want to buy a home if I drove down that road to access my home. I'd be like, "Yeah, I'm buying in a, in an area." But when I look coming off of there then, if there's a 10-foot grade difference, how would I get from, because I could see putting a par, a road from the circle through the park into that area to do a development, except that if there's a 10-foot difference, it's kind of a steep road.
Right, there's--
So is that even plausible, I guess?
As it is now, no. Not unless you took out one of these houses that was further down.
Scott?
No, and, and while Ray was speaking, I guess, Mr. Murphy came in, he indicated that there's some critical infrastructure, 36-inch diameter storm drain that comes down this road into, into the pond here. So to pull a road down and around, it would create all sorts of challenges.
So really, if that were to be residential, the only way for them to access their homes would be going through the industrial inn?
Yeah.
Right.
Which we wouldn't recommend.
Might be kind of hard to sell those homes. What, I'm struggling to, first, we got the first chunk that they wanted to do, and we said yes to that, and now we're getting two chunks together, which I agree with the Planning Commission. Site 1, I'm okay with, but Site 2, I'm struggling with. So I guess I have a question as to, when we decide what we're doing, do they ha, does it have to be yes to both? Can we separate them out in a motion?
I would think so, I guess.
Yeah, as long as, you can't expand the scope. If, if it was a change in, or increase in acreage, we'd have to run it back through the process, meaning Planning Commission, et cetera. But the council certainly has the discretion to, to approve a smaller portion.
To approve one, but not two? Okay. Are there other things we could, could come up with? Because I know we say 119 or whatever you keep saying feet is, is a pretty good buffer, but if it were my home, I wouldn't feel like that was a good buffer. So I struggle with that because she's right, if it were my home, I wouldn't feel good about that. So I'm curious as to what other uses, because I don't think residential is plausible, so what other uses are possible? Anything? Don't know? Okay.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna echo, I did talk to the applicant earlier in the week via phone call, and I read the Planning Commission minutes. I have, I have no real issues with Site Number 1. However, I do recall on this one that I voted against the residential at the top, because we're doing what we're saying we can't do with that ingress egress off Bagley Park Drive for the other residential there on the west side. Site 2, I, I don't know how to make that work. I don't think residential is obviously the right place, but I'm also concerned, and I know the definition says that it is a buffering, a transitional zone between the industrial area that's there. However, a 35-foot tall building doesn't seem to me to give much privacy. I also am worried of trucks and forklifts that may be moving product around, and the constant beeping eliminates the quiet enjoyment of one's backyard. So, I don't know what the, I don't know what the solution is unless there's some zoning conditions that would have to come back of, you know, maybe building height and indoor warehousing or something like that, that there's some limits to Site 2, which I don't think we can discuss tonight because that would be a more restrictive scope. But, or can we, can we approve one site, not the other? So we can do that. But the Site 2, I, I, it's, I'm very sensitive to sounds and smells and noises from the industrial areas that move into residential areas, so I don't want to just, I just don't want to do Site 2 without some sort of zoning restrictions to help the residents in that area. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Whitlock.
And my comment on this too is I would agree with Councilmember Whitlock and Councilmember Anderson, that in separating the two, if we were to be able to do that, and perhaps when, when it gets to that point, if there's a motion made to do that, I could, I could agree with separating them and then voting on them at that time, but after the public hearing. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. That was going to be my point, that we should probably try to avoid opinions until after we've heard from the public and keep this part of the questions, but that's all.
Good point. With that, then, Ray?
Just one other thing, I know that the applicant is here, and they've got, I think, five slides that kind of address some of the things that I hit on, on that southeast side of that property, so just to let you know. And they'll be speaking through as part of the public, public hearing.
I think that would be appropriate as part of the public hearing, and because they represent a group, they can have more than three minutes. So with that, I will open up the public hearing, and anyone wishing to address this issue that has not already addressed us regarding this issue, may come to the microphone.
Mayor and councilmembers, appreciate the time. Mr. McCandless has addressed, he's eloquently stated many of our objections. I'm one of the neighbors that lives in one of the homes that back onto the Site 2 area.
Could you state your name for the record?
Yes, Kirk Baumgartner. So, and I'm a real estate agent, so I'm all for expanding and building and all that kind of stuff. I'm, I'm good with that. But having, putting this big commercial section right behind my house, as Mr. McCandless mentioned, it's about 10 feet higher than where my property is, and then you put a 35-foot building right there, it's just gonna like loom over my house. With all the other commercial that's around there, there's OSI that's just a little bit to the south and east of us, and, you know, I, I hear their trucks out there backing up, beeping loud, forklifts going on at 6:00 in the morning, 11 o'clock at night. We have to the west of us, other businesses back there that are driving trucks and dragging steel across pavement and making all kinds of noises all through the night. And then obviously, we get the wonderful Danin smell that comes into our neighborhood. So, we have plenty of commercial issues already, so to stick another commercial use right in our backyard, I just, I'm not for that. I wouldn't be looking forward to something like that at all. And as was mentioned-- And as was mentioned, the park that's right there is, is basically a retention pond. We have a big culvert that comes down and brings all the water from that industrial area down in there and, and into that, into that park, which before they put that in, came into my backyard. So there's a big retention back behind our wall back there right now that's maybe in that, in that easement that McCandless was talking about. But, but it still gets, you know, there are a lot of water runs down in there and everything else. So my concerns as a citizen and a neighbor of that site number two, I'm not favorable for that at all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council on this issue?
Twenty-ten North Redwood Road. I'll be addressing the, some of the issues associated with the slides that Mr. McCandless mentioned. And, uh, just get to those real quick.
Are you representing the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was pressing the wrong button. So here, just wanted to show this slide and give some general information about the, the site that Mr. McCandless has already mentioned, and just showing that when the residential subdivision was constructed, there was a significant amount of earthwork that occurred here, which created this differential associated with the property. Westridge Academy, as much of the valley slopes generally from the west to the east, draining to the Jordan River. And as a result of that, this property all drains to this corner area. And as such, there is a large detention basin that's been mentioned here. In association with the residential construction, that detention basin then was expanded and now conveys public water through this detention area to the larger regional facility controlled by the city. The elevation difference from this cul-de-sac to the edge of the property is ten feet, has been mentioned. And then if you take a full differential to Bagley Park, it's seventeen feet. This property has had some material placed here in the construction of Westridge Academy, but for the most part, slopes gradually from the west to the east. And again, drains to the detention basin, which then the flows are conveyed to the larger city-owned regional facility. As it relates to the application at hand, I think focusing on the general plan amendment is the most important element here, in that the findings for the zone change are associated with the question of answering, does it conform with the general plan use? So looking at land use, we just wanted to address that the staff has already established that the goals, objectives, and policies of the general plan can be met in that the application presents what the current zoning represents as a transition zone from the manufacturing over to the residential. These are some of the uses associated with the current public facility zone. And as you've noticed, those properties are small. One is seven acres, the other is five. With the conditional uses, which gives the opportunity then to restrict noise, view obstruction, smells, odors, other things associated with those uses. There are a little bit larger uses, campuses and so forth, that just don't quite fit on the properties. Westridge Academy has attempted to market these properties under this current zone and have just been unsuccessful in finding uses that are small enough, given that the majority of the permitted uses over here are high schools, vocational schools, cemeteries, churches of that nature, that just don't quite fit on these sites, particularly as they relate to conforming with the adjacent land uses. This one here is the plat that was associated with the residential subdivision. This parcel down here on the end is already a lot unto itself. It's Lot Five of a previously approved subdivision. It's not associated with the residential subdivision. And this dashed line associated with this plat shows the area that is currently under an easement held by West Jordan City. And it does show that there's a distance there of one-hundred-and-nineteen feet. This property in this portion is the regional detention basin, which is the open space that's held by the city. Because this easement is also controlled by the city, it restricts the ability to construct permanent structures within that easement area and serves as a great buffer to the residential as the zoning proposed or the land use proposed is consistent with the ordinance as far as recommending a zone that's consistent with these uses that are proposed. The other thing is, one of the other findings that needs to be made is that it constitutes an overall improvement to the adapted general land use map and is not solely for the good or benefit of a particular person or entity. There was some confusion on this issue, and would like, Westridge Academy would like to make it clear that if they can find the right use and the right user, they would like to then sell these properties, which reverts them from their current tax-exempt status into a taxable status, which then puts them into office space and other things where now land use, as far as taxes are concerned, could be collected on the properties where they currently hold an exempt status in, in the current tax rolls under Westridge Academy itself. So the idea is, Westridge Academy has property that they can't use, and they would like to find users that can use it. They need a zone to be able to do that, and then they can take this out of an exempt status and bring it into a taxable status. Lastly, we'd just like to focus on, will it adversely impact the neighborhood? Sure, there's going to be some change there. What's currently weeds in an open field will change. There will be a user there. We'd like to consider, or at least point out, that the heavy commercial provides for some restriction to the uses or the more heavy uses in manufacturing. The conditional uses that are there already.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address counsel on this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and come back to City Council for further discussion and our motion. Councilmember Burton.
Mayor, may I ask the applicant a question or two?
Absolutely. Yes.
Thank you. So for the applicant, I don't know which one you're going to answer, but first I want to make a statement and say, I appreciate that we have Westridge Academy here in West Jordan. I know you moved here from sixty-two-hundred South, and you moved to this location to give you some more room and flexibility. But I, but as I see you selling off pieces of property, are you not planning to ever expand and incorporate those areas? Is that why you're, you're making these moves? That your long-term plans have changed?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't catch the beginning of that question. I apologize.
I say, I know that when you moved to this, you had some ideas to expand and fill the area, which is why you had that large area.
Sure, we initially purchased that in nineteen ninety-one for eighty acres.
Right, you moved there from sixty-two-hundred South.
Correct.
A smaller area, and you've done some fantastic things over there.
Thank you.
And I've known people who've been blessed and, and made progress because of the services you provide. So my question is, apparently you've had some plans to use those other areas, but I guess you have changed your plans, so your long-term plans don't include using these areas anymore?
They do not. Our long-term plans, uh, the build-out that we have currently in the thirty-five acres, plus or minus, of existing facilities can handle our build-out.
And I see there's some space in, in the middle part. Do you plan on building out in that sometime? Or do you keep it that way?
Which is the middle part you're referring to?
Right in the center, where it says parcel, right there, yes.
Yes, that is a future ballfield.
Okay, so that will be used by?
That, that'll be an open space, correct?
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Not sure who to address this question to, but maybe Mr. Murphy. Does somebody know the length of this room that we're sitting in here? I'm trying to visualize that one-hundred-and-nineteen-foot easement in context of what's there. I don't, but of all the people, I figured Mr. Murphy might.
Well, the ceiling around it is about thirty-five.
Okay.
So I'm guessing it's about?
I would estimate about eighty.
I'm guessing about eighty as well.
I could walk it off for you.
Did you? Okay, there we go. So it's about the size of this room, and then fifty percent more is the, the easement. That's, can you... So does this one, the dotted line, does that show where that easement is? I guess that's a question for Mr. Langford.
Yeah, this, this dash line right here represents the, the easement.
Okay, so nothing could be constructed in that area? But could it conceivably be used as parking lot or something along those lines? Or does it have to be just open space with maybe, maybe turf or?
I don't know the, the details or the terms of that particular easement. But if it's meant for stormwater collection, uh... Technically not, but you... You, you could possibly design some underground storage, and, but that's, that's very expensive.
Kirk, can you unmute? You might be able to put that into underground storage underneath a parking lot, such as we did with the Public Works facility. But you would, would need that as a permanent storm drain facility because of what flows into it and through it.
Thank you. Just for the benefit, benefit of the council, the things that are running through my mind, I understand why the planning commission had five motions before they could find something that would, would pass. This is, this, this one's not the easiest one in the world. The, the parcel on the west, parcel to the west, I don't have any issue with, and I could be supportive of that. Both of these parcels are in the same application. I'm, I'm a little hesitant to act on one and not the other. If we... The other thought is, I'm, Westridge Academy has been a great partner for quite some time. So if it looks like things aren't going to pass, rather than denying this outright, I would prefer to table it to give them time to work with staff and come up with something else so that they don't have to go through all the fees and the process again, but can continue working. So if for some reason, it doesn't look like it's going to go through, that would be my preferred approach. I don't know if we could do that. I, I don't know if we could pass the one and then table the other. So I, I'd be open to direction there. I do have concerns about the proximity of the parcel on the east of the neighborhood. While I don't, I personally don't live in a home that is adjoining a heavy commercial, the house right next door to me does back up right against a parcel that is general commercial. And then next lot over is Community Shopping Center SC Two Zone. So I definitely understand what that's going to feel like, and there are some days where it's not fantastic. Now, I bought my home knowing what the adjoining zoning was, and I wasn't surprised by any changes. So if I don't like it, that's on me. In this case, the folks who are currently there don't have that same capability. So I definitely lean more towards the side of protecting the folks who have already invested and developed over there. And if it can be shown that that buffer is going to be more than sufficient to, to make sure that there's no negative impact, I could be convinced to support that. Though with heavy commercial and some of the, the allowed usages, with the comments that perhaps there could be something changed with the water storage to allow them to get closer than that one-hundred-and-nineteen feet. At, at this point in time, I'm going to be surprised if there's an, an argument that can be made that would put me in favor of the change, which is why I made my earlier comments that at, at this point, knowing, knowing that Westridge has been such a great partner for so many years, I, I would be more inclined to table this for a time, four or five months out, rather than an outright denial. But if that's something, the applicant needs something right now, what's been proposed right here for parcel number two, the one on the east, I would be in favor of denial, while I would be supportive of the change to the one on the west. So that's a whole lot to throw out there, but just want to put all the cards on the table so you know what I'm thinking, so I don't have to hit the button again and again and again. Hopefully that helps. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. So my question, maybe Scott, maybe Ray, but... So we're looking to zone this as a CM, which is a heavy commercial. And you were describing how that is a good one for transition for a residential, like what we have in this case. Whereas compared to what's on the other side of the street is a M-one, which is light industrial. So how is CM less adverse to residential than an M-one?
Both the light industrial and the CM do allow for light industrial uses. But the intent of the CM, the uses that are listed in the CM, Scott, I've got, I think I've got that down at the bot, the use table. Down at the, or down at the bottom of the computer screen, is it T up? We can just take a look at those. But the bottom line is, is that they do both allow it, but the, the uses are just less intensive than what would be allowed in the M-one district. We can just take a look at that. This is the CM district is the second column over, so you can kind of see what those are. Top of the table, it's like daycare, but it's not till you get down to the, the bottom where it starts talking about your manufacturing, General and Manufacturing Limited, those kinds of things. Then if you want, you can jump over to the, the M-one table. As you can see, it allows quite a, quite a, a, a larger number, or greater number of, of, of uses.
So would you say in the CM, you could do everything? You can do it in M-one? For an M-one, you can do anything but more?
It's the other way, it's the other way around. In the, the CM, the, the...
Okay, yeah, I had it backwards.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Lamb. Or did you have another comment, Ray?
Oh, just another comment. If the council decides to, to separate these units, or these two pieces of property out, I think what we'd like to do is, is to table it, give us a chance to talk to the applicant and also just kind of reanalyze it, so just.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. I think you answered my question. I was gonna, I was gonna say, I think we're all in agreeance. Parcel one, good to go. Parcel two, I don't see anybody in agreeance with parcel two tonight. I, I too agree. I, I think there needs to be a buffer. I'm thinking of the ivory homes that are over by Danan, on that little island that are by themselves, and wondering, how did that get approved right next to manufacturing like it did? And so I, that's what I worry here, but the homes are already there. So the home, in this case, the homes are there first, manufacturing second. And looking at, if you go back to the other map that shows the second parcel, I'm not sure, yeah, right there? I would be even willing to, to look and say, hey, let's have a buffer and cut that parcel in half and still have that be man, the manufacturing, and leave the other as open space or buffer between those homes. Because I think that would give the buffer that the residents would like. They're already near, unfortunately, they are near all those other manufacturers as well. But I too, if, if I lived in that area, I wouldn't want that to be up against my backyard of my neighborhood as well. So, um, like you said, i- i- if the applicant's willing to go and redo this tonight, let's table this and look at something different. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. So obviously, it's not our job to tell the developers how to, how to do things, but sometimes it is a little helpful to say, this is what we think. Just as I'm looking at this, a- again, I'm, just because I'm thinking, and the filter's not really there. So if this comes out messy, my apologies. But as I'm looking at the map, and then we heard earlier that there's anticipation that a ballfield will be built between the two, is there some way that we could switch in that parcel two that's right up against the neighborhood? That could become the ballfield, and then we could expand that section, that parcel one, kind of up in the middle? And I, I know it'd segment those two properties a little bit more, but I think it'd be easier to have a segmentation there than the, the different types of uses against the, the homes. Ju- just a thought, that may have already been considered and thrown out the window for, for a number of different reasons. But if we could expand that parcel one and then turn that parcel two into the ballfield, may, maybe. So if there's no other thoughts, I would make a motion that we tabled this item to no later than the second meeting in October.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Councilmember Whitelock. Discussion of the motion. Councilmember Jacob, by the way, welcome. You came in at six fifty-two PM.
Thank you. I apologize for my tardiness. I had a family event that turned into a family emergency. So it lasted about an hour longer than I thought it would. However, everything's good. We're good now, so at least I hope. In any case, can we, I, I, I understand that it's already been mentioned that we can separate this and approve the one and table the other. I'd rather do that than table it both. That's just kind of where I'm sitting. Right, right now. That's, that's just where I'm sitting right now. I'd rather, I'd like to see that happen if that's possible, but I'll just throw that out for discussion.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. It, it was brought up in Mr. McCandless's house that if it's going to be... It, it was brought up and, uh, Mr. McCannell's house that if it's going to be split apart, table it both so they can circle back with the applicant, so, so that's why I'm in that one. I, I just wanted to clarify with the motion, it was to a date no later than the second meeting of October, and the primary reason for that date is, I hate to use the word arbitrary from the dais, but if we need to find a different date, I would be open to that. I just want to give plenty of time to talk, and, um, if for some reason staff comes back and says it needs to be later than that, I would be open to something later than that. I just wanted to make sure that there was a date, so that's why October came out. Thank you, Mayor.
Seeing no further discussion, let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
And Mayor Riding?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
I'll move to item six, consent items. I have not been asked to pull any tonight. So, with that, would someone like to make a motion? Councilmember Anderson.
I'll move to approve all consent items.
And Councilmember McConaughey?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Anderson, a second by Councilmember McConaughey, discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Mayor Riding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
And Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
So, we'll now go to item eight, remarks, two minutes per person, so we'll start with Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say, if there's nobody for remarks, I'm ready to make a motion.
Are there any other remarks that anybody would like to make tonight?
Seeing none, I move...
Seeing none, we'll take your motion.
I move that we move to closed session for the items listed on the agenda and then adjourn from there.
We, that's right, we do have workshop on the agenda, item nine A.
So, I will withhold my motion, but I will point out that I'm not a fan of workshops that don't have any sort of documentation so we can prep in advance.
Okay, we will now move to a workshop. We'll just suspend city council meeting, move to the workshop, and then come back to city council meeting following the workshop. So, and we're going to turn the time over to, uh, Mr. Lee.
Council on the workshop, I have just a couple of things we want to visit with you about, uh, primarily the construction or remodeling of council offices in the, um, in the city hall building. First and foremost, as administration, you should know, we're trying to do everything we can to move forward as quickly as we can to prepare for the change in the form of government. With that said, as we started preparing for, thinking about, the council is going to have a council o- office director, council administrator support, what physical changes do we need to make in this building for, that, we started moving forward with, um, brainstorming, thinking about plans and so on. And then we paused and thought, you know what, we need to circle back to the council and determine, does the council, you as a current sitting council, want us to move forward in this regard and want us, want to weigh in on the design and process? Or do you want us to wait until the new council is seated with the new form of government and, um, bring up this discussion and let the new council make those determinations?
Okay, let me just state, uh, to Jamie that they, this is the work study meeting, so everybody's microphone should be open, so you're, you're just free to jump in on this work meeting.
All right, then I'll jump in. Um, I'm not ready to have the conversation at this point with so much going on with the change in form of government, everything that's going to happen to code as we're looking at. Some of the things I think will still kind of be up in the air as we start. I mean, we've had the conversations about the council director and other position, potential positions within the council with what the, the mayor's staff could potentially look like. I don't want to start conversations about remodeling the building quite yet. I think it's something that'll be necessary, but I, I want to wait till we're a little bit further along. Um, I don't think we necessarily need to wait until, um, I, I, I think it would be good to have an initial conversation, end of November, when everybody's here and we know how things are going to be changing. I think it would be beneficial to hear from the current council what our thoughts are, but at the same time, I think the new council that'll be seated in January as, uh, should, should have an opportunity to be heard as well. So, if we do just comments and insights towards the end of November, first of December, and then continue that into January with the new council, I think that would be the appropriate timing.
And, and I, I agree with much of what Chris stated, um, but I also want to add that I don't think we should be expending money to remodel this building when we could get in a mayor that decides they want something totally different, and that will be within their power, and then we will have wasted money. So, I too would like to wait until the election is over and that we have the new, the new members at least be able to be heard. They won't have a vote at that point, but they can be heard, and we can allow that, and I hope that we choose to allow that. Um, so that's kind of where I'm at, but I appreciate you thinking, being forward-thinking and thinking about it, but for me, there's plenty of room in this building, there's plenty of office space that people can be in. It may not be ideal, but you know what? We can live with not ideal. It's okay.
And we could, to, to kind of build on top of that, they can have their voice heard when we start speaking in November, but this would be a good thing to carry through into strategic planning. I just want to make sure that everybody here who's lived with everything has a chance to share their thoughts, because I know some won't still be here, so we should start the conversation before, um, the end of the year, but I think it falls to them.
All I was going to ask was if you had something already, a, a thought or a plan or anything, do we have, have you started down the road at all, even conceptually at this point?
We've got our own conceptual ideas, but we want to, um, get your ideas when you're ready, and then, uh, take our ideas, your ideas, and, uh, visit with a professional to see what works and what doesn't.
Okay, I'm just thinking back to my first couple of weeks as a councilman, first couple of months, you know, as a member of the council. Where I might set up a computer someday was like the last thing on my mind, you know what I mean? I, I would be fine moving forward with it now or whenever. I don't, I don't think it matters, you know? They can always come in and change things anyway. Whether it's, whether it's this council or the next council or the one after that or the one after that, there's always going to be a possibility of changing things. I think, um, it could be a topic of discussion for the next couple of months amongst those who would like to be on the council, and they could decide how much money they want to spend for remodeling city hall. I don't know. Um, I imagine the question will come up somewhere or somewhere else. So, anyway, the, just the, the thought I had, I'm, I'm curious to know what kind of, uh, ideas have been floated around, but I guess we can talk about that offline.
Okay, so I've been a little proactive. I went and visited Sandy a few months ago, because I wanted to know, because both me and C- uh, Councilmember Whitelock will be on the, on the, uh, stand next year. I got a chance to tour their offices. I got a chance to see what they have. We don't need much. Their council offices are very small. It's a conference room and two offices, which I believe we have right over there. So, as my first initial thought is, um, I agree with all of you, we don't need to talk about money or refurbishing, but I would like to designate, if we could, those offices. This is Councilmember Lamb speaking, not, not speak for any of you on, on the dais, but we could designate, uh, the current council office, which is already council office, the conference room, and I believe it's Sean's office, is that it? We could designate those as the council offices for now. We don't need to do any refurb, we don't need to do any changing or structure at this point, but I would like to, if we can, designate those three rooms as the council offices for January first, when that time comes up, and then we can talk about making changes after the new year.
And along with that, for security purposes, um, do we already have a door that sections that off from the rest of the hallway that could lock right there?
Yes, there's currently a door there that they leave open, so Sean can get in and out, even though I don't think Sean goes in and out as much as he used to.
Councilman, you're talking bef- before, after the bathrooms, as you turn that corner?
Right there, and then something that, is there a door that sections off?
Yes.
That one?
There's a door right there by the bathroom.
Okay, I knew there was the one backup here, but I don't remember ever seeing something closed.
It's always open. That's probably why.
That would be why.
Cool. So, that's all I'm saying, is I, I think, I think we can designate those three rooms right now and say, let's look at those three rooms as use for our council, even though we don't know who's going to be on after, you know, the voting. But I, I feel comfortable doing that today, because right now, one's already designated council office, so not much changing on there. And then after the new year, I, I agree with Chris, let's get together as a new council, and, uh, let's make a decision on what we can do, and I, I think the new mayor would be nice to play with us. Councilmember Whitelock, you never know.
Well, the new mayor's sitting up here, so we can ask the new mayor.
Is there anything else you needed from us then tonight, Gorman?
No, I think with that direction, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll, we don't have any intended uses right now for those spaces other than how they're being used currently, so we will be happy to kind of set that aside. We won't proceed further, um, until we get through the election process, and then we'll, uh, then we'll bring this issue up again. It sounds like that's the will of the majority of the council.
Thank you. We can, uh, come back into city council meeting now?
I was going to say, with that, I would move, I, I'd bring back my motion that we moved to closed session for the reasons stated on the agenda and then adjourn from there.
And we have a second on that as well? I think the council...
Second.
So, uh, any discussions of that motion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Riding?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.